Thank you, members of the council. I'd just like to take a minute. We had an MMA conference a couple of weeks ago. And our employee here, Sean, was recognized by MIA, Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, at the breakfast. The mayor had a conflict. His office asked me if I would go. Sean, due to a death in the family, was unable to attend. So I did accept the award in his name. But we wanted to do something special for him because he was so highly spoken of and regarded at that meeting that I thought it was important that all of us as a council hear that. Because there were a lot of nice things that were said about him. And just to prove that point, Lynn Shabro from Reading, she's the senior risk management manager for MIA. And she came in tonight to bring Sean's award and to say a word or two about Sean. And Maureen, I'm going to get this right, Montanas?
Oh, pretty close.
Montanas?
Montanas.
Montanas. It was the risk manager for Lominsters, MIA, MIA for Lominsters. And so I asked that Sean would be here tonight so that we could recognize him and they could present him with his award that he was not able to receive a couple of weeks ago. So with that, I'm going to ask Maureen and Lynn if they would say a couple of words.
I'll just be really quick. Thank you all. We appreciate all the council members and the mayor for coming today. And we just really want to thank you. As part of the MMA, we admire a lot of the best practices that are adhered to within the DPW. And we just appreciate the working relationship we have with Sean and the department. And from the MMA and MIA, I just want to say thank you. It's been difficult. You guys probably are aware, in 2022, regulations around OSHA and the requirements for municipalities pretty much drastically changed. And these guys, as I was speaking to them tonight, this is the first head of a DPW who has ever mentioned OSHA proactively to me. I've been in this business for 30 years. I've been with brokers, Aon, ANA, and I've been across the spectrum in insurance. And to have a partner like these guys is really a gift. And I'm sure you know that with all the relationships you have throughout your public service. So with that, I'm actually going to pass it over to Maureen because she's the one who really does the day-to-day and the coordination.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I did not know I'd be speaking today. But I'm happy to do so. As Claire said, I am the risk manager for MIA, assigned to Lominsters. I have been with MIA about seven years. I've had upwards of 100 members that I've dealt with. And truly, Sean has been, as Lynn said, the most proactive member I've seen as far as safety of his workers and OSHA and all of that. The award he received was named after, so I'm going to get emotional, a very special person in MIA. Her name was Bridgette. She died a couple of years ago, and she was a safety champion. And so this award was named for her. And there was a list of criteria that somebody had to meet to earn it. And when it opened up, Sean was the very first person who came to my mind. He deserves it. Ray also is deserving of it because everything Sean does can't be done without Ray's support. We have safety committee meetings every month. Sean has gone through the OSHA certification program. He's owned his own business and dealt with safety compliance. But to me, what makes Sean stand out, and Ray, more than the safety compliance, is he truly cares about keeping his people safe. I've heard stories of things he's done that are above and beyond compliance. And he's just a really special human being. And so is Bridgette. So it's like so perfect. Sorry. That's it.
Thank you, Maureen and Lynn. Just before I ask the mayor to come up, I want to read what the criteria was for this award. Shows genuine concern for the protection of people and property. Strives for continuous improvement with health and safety for workers in the public sector. Develops a respectful, collegial, and supportive work and service environment. Demonstrates dedication to high safety standards. Participates in association work on the regional and national level. Exemplifies a culture of leadership and partnership. Shares knowledge, experience, and resources to assist others in their safety efforts and challenges. Promotes coordinated discussions and interactions between town departments to prevent injuries, illness, and unsafe conditions or practices. And the accolades that were mentioned by the president of the MIA board, as well as Adam Chapdellane, the president of the MMA, congratulations to Sean Como. A 2024 award recipient is Sean Como, Public Works Code Enforcer for the city of Lominsters. As a skilled and dedicated safety professional, Sean has been instrumental in advancing Lominsters beyond safety compliance into safety leadership, as reflected by his recent accomplishments. He helped the city to quickly move through a 500-year flood recovery while keeping Lominsters' employees healthy and injury-free and developed a robust safety program in Public Works. Sean consistently participates in Lominsters' safety committee meetings, shares his knowledge with other departments, and is leading the development of a citywide safety and health program. So it just goes to show how lucky we are that we have Sean working for us and that he was recognized. And as Lynn and Maureen both said, without Ray allowing him to do that, the next level is the mayor who allows and encourages his employees to do the same. So, Mayor, could you say something?
Sure. Can you hear me okay? These actually work. We take safety and always have, even long before the OSHA requirement, serious. We don't want any employees to get hurt. We have an aging population who rely on our downtown or sidewalks, whatever it might be, or kids walking to school or buses. And so we spend a lot of time on safety. But when Sean came, it brought us to another level because he got it. He got it in this private world. He dealt with it, but he got it. And it's not just getting the requirements, it's how do you take a culture where, you know, we used to just get boots or a shirt that said some company name on it and wear it to work, and that was your uniform of the day. And there were no safety vests, no steel toes, those kinds of things. So changing the culture of the world that we are in is sometimes a challenge. Not that they don't take safety serious, but it's just something that, you know, you've passed practice, the things that you used to do. The city does pay stipends for safety issues in all departments across the city, and it's just a sign that we do take it serious. We're moving, Sean's done so much work for us. At our last meeting, we were trying to push him into someday maybe a full-time effort where he's the safety person for the entire city and would work along all public safety and all municipal agencies across the city. As I said, risk management is one thing, and saving money on insurance is important. But injuries, making sure people are safe and working in a safer environment, is the most important thing. So, well deserved. He gets it. He knows what needs to get done. And every day, think of how many movements, you know, our employees, every day, all the actions and times they get in and out of a vehicle, or walk down steps, or just in their normal day's activity. Think of all those things that happen in the course of a day and all the things that can go wrong with people like Sean and others who get it. Makes it a much safer and better place to work and live in our community. I'm sure you see, so the library and other buildings downtown, there's just a lot of people who walk today. Or should I say, don't stay home five hours after the storm is over. They're back out there. And they want to get to shopping, and they want to get to church, and they want to get to the library. And even in this building here, we were very busy this morning. But all of that has to be taken into consideration. So Sean, nice job. Congratulations.
I got actually a couple of things. This position didn't exist seven years ago. So Sean and I got together, we discussed, because I knew he had some safety background. And I went to Dean, and he allowed us to create a position, which we came before the council, and we voted it in, and it became part of the ordinance. So that's when we actually started this program. And the guys that we have working for us, it was like herding chickens to try to get these guys to conform. And he was chasing them around and going to the jobs and making sure they were decked out in their safety gear and their colors. So it hasn't been easy, but honestly, Sean has kind of made it look easy. So he does deserve this award, and we do appreciate what he does for us.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome, sir.
Sean, you're the star of the day now.
Yeah, so thank you, thank you, everyone. And thank you to the mayor, thank you to Raymond, and to these ladies here, Claire. Thank you, guys. Like the mayor said, it was definitely a culture change, you know, when all these standards took place. But, you know, hats off to some of the DPW guys too, because they really bought in. You know, a lot of them did buy into it. And, you know, it's been, it has been a struggle to get to compliance, but it hasn't been impossible, you know. So really, it's been a team effort all the way around. So I really got to thank everybody.
Maureen, I'm going to ask you to come up. Maureen was actually the person that nominated Sean. So I'm going to ask Maureen to come up and present Sean with his award.
Do it without crying, but I might not do it without falling. Are you going to take a picture, Lynn, or how are we going to?
Would it be okay?
I mean, would you? Do it after?
Sure, we can do it after.
Sean?
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, guys. And that one.
When do you take a picture?
Why don't you guys stand up with them?
No, that's fine.
No, it would be nice to have.
Yeah, the mayor and Raymond.
Do we save any money on insurance policy?
Sean saves some money every day.
And mayor, I'm going to give this one to you. This is to the city of Lominsters, Sean's work for us.
Council Frida, thank you for coordinating this.
I also have one more thing because I'm not great at it, and I'm not fast at it, but this was, this was on the screen the day of the breakfast when they awarded you the award.
Excellent.
So I made a copy.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well done.
Oh, no, I thought you would give it to him.
Oh, okay, I can do that.
Sean, you have one more.
Again, Council Frida, thank you very much for coordinating this tonight. It's obviously a very worthwhile thing. Sean, this is a certificate from the city council. Congratulations on your recognition by the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association for your outstanding service in keeping Lominsters safe. Your work as OSHA code enforcer is exemplary, and the city council thanks you and appreciates all that you do. Presented February 10, 2025, and it's signed by the city council. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you, mayor. Thank you, Ray Racine, for everything. We constantly know that we have a great DPW, and we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Council Angelini, even though it really probably shouldn't be in the public hearing section, 24-25 is scheduled under a heading that's at 6:40 p.m. Perhaps if we just let the public know that, maybe if you read that, indicate that the public hearing is scheduled for, at least currently, February 24. And based on the fact that the planning board isn't going to hear it until the 3rd of March, later on the agenda when it comes up, we'll ask for further time till March 10, our March 10 meeting. So if you just want to read that now?
Certainly.
We're not opening any public hearings, so.
No, no. Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, 2425 is Thomas M. Bivenzi Esquire on behalf of Steve Boucher. Request to amend the zoning district map for parcel 352-6 such that the entire parcel will be zoned Residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. As the president aptly noted at our last meeting, we had given this further time. We continue this public hearing and schedule the public hearing for February 24 at 6:40 p.m. However, in the interim, we received a notice from the planning board that they will be conducting their public hearing on petition 24-25 on March 3. Therefore, when this comes up for the second time this evening, we'll be asking for further time and try to move the continued public hearing up to March 10, our first meeting in March, so we can anticipate a referral from the planning board for that March 10 meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 6:49, we now will convene, we will convene the public forum at 6:55. So we have six minutes of TV timeout. ... of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. We don't have anybody that formally signed up to speak in the public forum, but I'll ask, Mr. Mayor.
Since I'm here, there are two items on the agenda tonight. One is C-34, request an appropriation $670,000 made to the Menusnock Brook project account same to be transferred from Park Grant Capital Account. Obviously, that was something we appropriated the dollars for, got reimbursed, kept it active. So there's no other real appropriation out of any other account that needs to be made. And as you know, we've been working, Wendy has been working on this Menusnock Brook project for so long, there are different phases of it in order to get it finally funded. And it's now funded. It's engineered, it's ready to go, and it will be going out to bid very shortly. It's a FEMA award, it's almost, as you can see here in all the details, it's almost a $6 million, over a $6 million project. We get 90% back in reimbursement, and again, we're ready to go out to bid. It's a big project. There are a lot of, I think anybody that's gone through town on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night and see all those cars downtown at our local restaurants and businesses know there are a lot of people downtown. So even during the daytime, lots are full, there are a lot of logistics and where do we set up equipment, and those are the things that we're going to work through with the business owners and the company that ends up getting the bid. The other one is, maybe not as glamorous, but it's a C-35, a $27,000 appropriation made to the North Nashware Project Account, and that's, again, to be transferred from the Park Capital Account. That's Phase 2 of the infrastructure project. If you remember, the very day that we had the flood, they finished that project. So if you're heading out of town on the left-hand side, you saw all that work going on stabilizing the riverbanks. This is Phase 2. The total cost of the project is 1.7, almost 1.8 million dollars, and again, 90% is reimbursement. The city matches $27,000 coming, again, from that Park grant. So I just ask that you vote on those favorably. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Is there any other member of the audience that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? And for a second time, is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the council on an agenda item? In a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed, and we'll open the meeting at 7:00, which is in two minutes.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll take a roll call over the councilors present, starting with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Arndinger.
Present.
Council Angelini.
Present.
Council Tossi.
Present.
Council Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Council Robbins.
Present.
Council Frida.
Present.
And I mark myself present. We have eight councils in attendance this evening. Moving on to approval of records. Council Arndinger, I believe you're standing in for... Okay, all right. If unless there's an objection, we'll put that over to the next meeting when our Vice President has returned. Moving on to communications from the mayor's time with C-34.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $670,000 to be made to the Menusnock Brook Project Account, the same to be transferred from the Park Grant Capital Account.
C-34 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-34 has been given regular course. C-35.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that the appropriation of $27,000 be made to the North Nashware Project Account, same to be transferred from the Park Grant Capital Account.
C-35 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-35 has been given regular course. C-36.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that the City Council vote to accept GL Chapter 64 L Section 2 A to implement a local meals exercise.
All right, I'll note for the record, councilors, that that is not a two-thirds vote, so the clerk is going to correct that that's a simple majority vote, and I will refer that to the Chairman of Finance.
C-36 is given regular course, and I will note that I don't expect a vote on this at the next meeting. The mayor can't be here and wants to be, so I think we'll be voting on this, just so everyone knows, on the March 10th meeting.
Very well, so we'll schedule that. We'll keep it on the agenda, but we'll schedule it for hearing on March the 10th, or action on March the 10th. Moving on to C-37.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that the appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Police Department Overtime Account, the same to be transferred from the Stabilization Fund.
C-37 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Regular course.
Very well, C-37 has been given regular course. C-38.
Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request the following cable receipts received for appropriation be established pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F and 3/4.
C-38 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C-38 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with 28-25.
Chinnys Helping Hand Inc. requests to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at 52 Mechanic Street, Leominster, Mass.
28-25 is referred to Council Arndinger, standing in for the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, 28-25 has been given regular course. Moving on to 29-25.
Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the flood plan. Federally mandate update to flood plan District EP Article 5...
6.
Section 22-34.
29-25 is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs, and, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to note that that's going to require two successive legal advertisements in the newspaper, so we're not going to get to that on the next meeting, I don't believe, right? So we're going to ask that that go to 310 as well, if that's okay?
That's fine. Well, it is first time on the calendar, regular course, and I'd like to see if we get some referrals.
Okay.
One from the Building Commissioner, Conservation Commission, and Emergency Management as well.
Okay. All right, so we're going to schedule that at, let's see, why don't we schedule that at 6:40 on March 10th? With referrals to Building, Conservation Commission, Emergency Management. All those in favor of scheduling a public hearing on that March 10th at 6:40, please indicate in the usual manner. Anyone opposed by vote 8 to 0, that may be done. Moving on to 30-25.
Rogers Fine Jewellers, Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at 255 North Main Street, Leominster, Mass.
30-25 is referred to Council Arndinger.
Thank you, regular course for final account.
Very well, 30-25 has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council, is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. The City of Leominster Stabilization Fund, we began with a balance on July 1, 2024 with I believe we've received appropriation transfer in, I think the source of this was interest in the amount of $343,294.67. To date, we will have spent, and pending C-37, if approved at the next meeting, we will have spent $1,134,350.45, and that will leave us with a balance of $22,136,498.3. The City of Leominster's capital stabilization began with and still has a balance of $2193,191.62. And the opioid stabilization fund began with $518,703.20. We've received proceeds from the state in the amount of $172,743.90, and we have spent $133,000, which will leave us a balance of $558,447.10, and that is the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to...
Mr. President?
Yes, sure, Council Frida.
Mr. Chair, what's going on with free cash?
I have not heard about that yet. I will inquire with the comptroller. I have not heard anything yet about free cash.
It's already been determined. We have $15 million in free cash coming.
She is not...I haven't been...
Well, it's on the cherry sheet on the state, so we should know something about it.
I'll inquire.
As the Finance Chair, I think you should know.
Yeah, I'll inquire about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Frida, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to matters before finance, starting with C-32.
C-32, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of $65,000 be made to the Montechusa Recovery Center out of the capital expense line in the general fund, same amount to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund. This is, this money is coming out of the fund that I had just mentioned, and we have a letter here from the MRC, Montechusa Recovery Center. The city's financial support using the opioid stabilization funds, abatement funds, has been vital to the operations of Montechusa Recovery Center, MRC. As the only municipal municipality using abatement funds to support our mission and one of just a few municipalities putting their own funds to any substantial use thus far, we are incredibly grateful for the continued encouragement of our mission. In the past six months, MRC has expanded its recovery support services, RSS, in attempt to better meet the volume of individuals seeking support. Notably, MRC has signed a partnership contract with Luck Crisis Center Incorporated in offering our services through the outpatient clinic. As of today, the agreement has moved into the live phase and will be producing gainful results in the next year ahead as it becomes fully implemented. Additionally, in this time, we have hired a recovery coach supervisor as well as two other recovery coaches and are interviewing for a recovery support navigator position. In working towards independent financial sustainability, the RSS expansion is essential for our agency to meet the needs of those in our community who struggle with opioid use disorder and other substance use and mental health disorders, especially for those residents that MRC provides free services to that private health insurance does not cover. The Montechusa Recovery Foundation Corp's Board, MRF, respectfully requests a continued funding grant of $65,000 in abatement funds toward these ends. We sincerely thank you, Michelle Nato, the City Council, and the entire City of Leominster for this opportunity of continued support. And this is signed by Matthew B. Wright. So all these funds are going toward these causes that they're intended for, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C-32, and I'll see you check with members of my committee.
Council Angelini?
I'm in favor.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-32, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-32, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of 8 to 0, C-32 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $65,000 be made to the Montechusa Recovery Center out of the capital expense line in the general fund, the same amount to be transferred from the opioid stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed, the order is adopted by a vote of 8 to 0. Moving on to C-33, is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-33, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $25,000 be made to the Gallagher Building, the Gallagher Department Building and Grounds Expense Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Fund. This is regarding continued upgrades to the Gallagher Building. There was a letter here from Peter Nile, Dear Ms. Reddington, it has come to the attention of the Building Department that the radiators at the Gallagher Building have not been working appropriately, causing extreme temperatures while the heat is on. Boston Mechanical has found that the solution for this issue will be new thermostatic radiator valves to provide better control over each unit. The quote for this project is valued at $24,400. The Gallagher account is already expended 40.76% at the halfway point of fiscal year 2025. Is my prediction, this account will be overspent by the end of the fiscal year with this expense. Please consider this letter a formal request for transfer of $24,400 into the original, into the org object, and it gives the number. If you have any questions, contact my office. So these funds are collected by rent for this building, they go into a fund, and then when we run into issues like this, we have the money to pay for them, and we are obligated to, to keep the building clean and comfortable for everybody using it. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-33, and I'll see you check with members of my committee.
Council Angelini?
I would have to agree. I think that once this problem has been remediated, will probably pay for itself. I mean, if the heat is running to the point where it's making people uncomfortable, then we're certainly wasting fuel and resources, so I'd be in favor of it as well.
All right, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-33, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-33, please recognize the usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of 8 to 0, C-33 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $25,000 be made to the Gallagher Building, the Gallagher Building Department Building and Grounds Expense Account, same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Fund. This is regarding the continued upgrades of the Gallagher Building. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Anyone opposed by a vote of 8 to 0, the order is adopted. Moving on to Legal Affairs and 24-25.
Thank you. 24-25, again, is Thomas M. Vavensi Esquire on behalf of Steve Boucher. Request to amend the zoning district map for parcel 352-6 such that the entire parcel will be zoned Residence B, since a portion is currently zoned industrial. As noted earlier this evening, Mr. President, at our last meeting, we had scheduled, we had scheduled the continued, we continued the public hearing until February 24th at 6:40 p.m. In the interim, I believe it was on the 4th of February, we received a letter from the Planning Board informing us that they will be conducting a public hearing on petition 24-25 on March 3rd. twenty-four twenty-five on March third. Therefore, it would be my recommendation that we give twenty-four twenty-five further time, and we amend the public, the continued public hearing date to March tenth, at a time of year two...
Six forty-five, we're going to suggest. That's okay.
And that's fine, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Tossi?
I agree.
Okay, so the MS recommendation of Legal Affairs is to give twenty-four dash twenty-five further time, and to advance or delay the public hearing till March tenth at six forty-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing that public hearing date, giving further time, please indicate in the usual manner. That may be done by a vote of eight to zero, and Clerk's Office will notify the petitioner. Thank you. Moving on to Ways and Means, Council Artinger, batting for Council Cormier, twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-five twenty-five, Crown Jewelers, requested to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at twelve Lindell Avenue, Leominster, Mass. I've reviewed the application, and it seems to be in order, so my recommendation is to grant twenty-five twenty-five. Would you check with the committee, please?
Yes, sure. Council David Cormier?
I agree.
The MS recommendation of Ways and Means is to grant twenty-five dash twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twenty-five dash twenty-five, please recognize usual manner. Twenty-five dash twenty-eight dash twenty-five has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to twenty-six dash twenty-five.
Twenty-six dash twenty-five, Fanus Jewelers, requests to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at one hundred Commercial Road, Leominster, Mass. Again, I've reviewed the application, and it seems to be in order, so my recommendation is to grant twenty-five, twenty-six twenty-five, and please check with the rest of the members.
Sure. Council David Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Ways and Means to grant twenty-six dash twenty-five. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twenty-six dash twenty-five, please recognize the usual manner. Twenty-six dash twenty-five has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. And finally, twenty-seven dash twenty-five, Councilor?
Thank you. Twenty-seven twenty-five, upscale consignment, requests to renew license to deal secondhand dealer articles at eight seventy-five Miriam Avenue, Leominster, Mass. Again, I've reviewed the application, and it seems to be in order, and my recommendation is to grant twenty-seven twenty-five.
Council Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Ways and Means to grant twenty-seven dash twenty-five. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twenty-seven dash twenty-five, please recognize usual manner. Twenty-seven dash twenty-five has been granted by a vote of eight to zero. We don't have any new business listed. We have old business, second reading of an ordinance. Is the Chairman ready?
I am ready, Mr. President. Thank you. One second, please. This is indeed the second reading of an ordinance, formally petition fifteen dash twenty-five. And that was Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend zoning ordinance pertaining to MU two zoning. In the year two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster, as follows. Amending chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances is hereby amended by deleting and adding the following text regarding the MU two zoning district. Amending Article Three, Section twenty-two dash seventeen, underlying districts' table of uses, by deleting the entries for apartment slash multifamily dwelling under District MU two, and replacing such entries with "Y." And further, by amending Article Seven, Section twenty-two dash forty-point-three, table of dimensional regulations, by deleting the two rows for District MU two, and replacing them with the following two rows.
Unless there's any objection by the Council, I'm going to have, I'm going to ask that Councilor not read all those dimensional materials, unless somebody thinks it's necessary. Read it before, and it's available for the public. So unless there's an objection, Councilor, will you just skip to the next paragraph?
Thank you, Mr. President. And further, by amending Article Four, Section twenty-eight point two, general provisions, by deleting the text in Section twenty-eight point two, point one, inserting in its place the following. Projects in the MU two district may consist of residential, commercial, industrial, or mixed-use developments. And further, by amending Article Four, Section twenty-eight point three, by deleting in their entirety Sections twenty-eight point three point two, twenty-eight point three point three, and twenty-eight point three point four, and redesignating Section twenty-eight point three point five as twenty-eight point three point two. And further, by amending Article Four, Section twenty-eight point four, dimensional regulations, by deleting Section twenty-eight point four point one in its entirety, and by redesignating Section twenty-eight point four point two as twenty-eight point four point one, and redesignating Section twenty-eight point four point three as twenty-eight point four point two. And further, amending Section, Article Four, Section twenty-eight point five point one, buffer, by deleting the text in Section twenty-eight point five point one point one, and inserting in its place the following. Notwithstanding the requirements of the table of dimensional requirements, the Planning Board may require vegetated buffers of up to thirty feet between uses within the MU two district at its discretion during site plan approval. And further, by amending Article Four, Section twenty-eight point five point one, buffer, by deleting the text in Section twenty-eight point five point one point two, and inserting in its place the following. A buffer area shall be provided between any buildings in the MU two district in any adjacent residential zoning district. This buffer shall consist of natural, undisturbed trees and vegetation to the maximum extent possible. The width of the buffer and planting scheme shall be at the discretion of the Planning Board, but in no case shall be required to exceed fifty feet. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the second reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, Council Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of what was formerly petition fifteen dash twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council Cormier?
Yea.
Council Artinger?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Tossi?
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Freedom?
Yea.
And I'll be recorded as yea. The second reading is adopted by a vote of seven to one. Sixteen dash twenty-five, Councilor, Mr. Chairman, this ordinance is seven pages long. I don't think there's going to be any useful purpose by reading the entire thing this evening. I would suggest that this is, of course, the MBTA Communities Act, that, and this is our compliance. The ordinance creates a multifamily overlay district to comply with the act, which makes certain map changes in the City of Leominster where that overlay district is incorporated. It allows a density up to twenty units per acre in that multifamily overlay district. It changes the definition of a family a little bit more broad. It limits the amount of affordable units that are available in the multifamily overlay district, and unless somebody else has anything else to offer or objects to the fact of summarizing that, I think that is all that we need.
All right, in addition, Mr. President, thank you. To your comments, it also creates a distinct site plan approval process.
Right.
And the maps, the distinct maps with these overlay districts are available, both the Planning and Development Office and the Clerk's Office, if anyone so desires to peruse them.
Okay.
Other than that, I think you've summed it up marvelously, and it would be my recommendation that we adopt the second reading of this ordinance.
This is the first. Is it the second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, thank goodness.
I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
I'd be happy to. Council Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the second reading of what was formerly sixteen dash twenty-five, the MBTA Communities Act compliance. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Artinger?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Tossi?
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
And Council Freedom?
Yea.
And I'll be recorded as yea. By a vote of eight to zero, the second reading is adopted. Moving on to twenty-three dash twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Twenty-three dash twenty-five, once again, is the second reading of an ordinance, formerly petition twenty-three dash twenty-five. And this one is Union Square Realty Trust, James Exarist, trustee five oh seven Lancaster Street, requests that the City Council amend the current zoning of four ninety-three, four ninety-seven, and five oh one, and five oh seven Lancaster Street from MU one to Business B. In the year two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster, as follows. Amending chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning is hereby amended by amending the zoning map established pursuant to Section twenty-two dash six, such that the following parcels shall be situated in the Business B zoning district. Four ninety-three Lancaster Street, four ninety-seven Lancaster Street, five oh one Lancaster Street, and five oh seven Lancaster Street. Mr. President, it would be my recommendation that we adopt the second reading of this ordinance, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Council Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of what was formerly twenty-three dash twenty-five. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Council David Cormier?
Yea.
Council Artinger?
Yea.
Council Angelini?
Yea.
Council Tossi?
Yea.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Council Robbins?
Yea.
Council Freedom?
Yea.
And I'll be recorded as yea. The second reading is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Do we have any community calendar items? Yes, Council Robbins?
I just have one thing under old business.
Sure.
There was mention of free cash earlier in the Finance Report before the Munis Report. There is mention of the fifteen million dollars, so I just wanted to draw everybody's attention that it's at least there.
And I don't know when that came about. I got to talk to the Comptroller about it, and I, and some of that is, you know, gets paid back to the revolving accounts. How much money we're going to have, like, you know, just to actually spend, I don't know. I haven't talked to her about that yet. I think it's pretty hot off the press, you know, after we pay back all those accounts and whatnot. So I'll be fully ready to report on that at the next meeting.
It was certified on January twenty-eighth.
None of it has been communicated to me.
All right, so...
It's in the Finance Report. I mean, the communication is in the Finance Report.
Right.
Which came out today, right?
Yeah, which I just got at one-thirty this afternoon.
So, so what will, what, Council Cormier, if you wouldn't mind, usually we pay back the leftover funds from water and sewer. We also pay back the stabilization loan, so if you could get us a breakdown of what we're going to net?
Right.
That would be helpful, okay? All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your help with that regard. Anything on the community calendar? Council Freedom?
It's not really on a community calendar, but it's, it's an observation that I'd just like to put a message out to the public because it's, it's just such an abuse. I was at a funeral at Saint Anna, and the burial was at Saint Bernad's in Pittsburgh. And the amount of cutting through a funeral line was atrocious, and it was, it was rudeness. It was, there were so many people from out of town for this funeral. They had no idea where they were really going, and everybody had blinkers on. You know, I just wish that people could be more respectful, pay attention to what's going on, and, you know, we talked about it after, and somebody was saying that they had an incident where people weren't even pulling over for ambulances anymore, for fire trucks. I mean, that's, these are serious issues. We're all in a hurry all the time, and we're all busy all the time, but, you know, there's no excuse for doing that publicly. I mean, I think we're a better city than that, so, you know, I just hope people can pay more attention because that was, it upset the family, and it upset people that weren't really sure where they were going from, the church or the cemetery, so I just like to make that observation and maybe a plea to the community to pay just a little bit more respect.
Well, that, I've actually observed the same thing myself, so I, you know, it is a good point. Well taken. Anything else? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
I have a, one more thing. The Ward Two Councilor asked me to convey that at six P.M. next Tuesday, the eighteenth, at Francis Drake School, there's going to be a meeting regarding the proposed gaming complex up on the area of the old dump on Mechanic Street. I know that all the butters in that immediate area, the proponent of the project has sent them all a notice, but she just wanted me to make sure the public is aware that if anyone has any interest, that they can attend that meeting at six P.M. Tuesday, February eighteenth, at Francis Drake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Council Cormier, Council Freedom?
Just a little bit of a correction on that. It's not a, I don't think it's a gaming site. I think it's off-track betting, my understanding, and for the possible restra, but I think it's a little different than, I think some people have heard that it's a casino, and that's not what it is. So I think it's important that they go to the meeting and get the right information.
Okay. Thank you for that, both Councilors. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Council Shalfo, second, Council Robbins, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com, and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.